Okay, you're all set.
All right, I'm going to call the July 19th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting for Order. The first item on the agenda, Item 1B, is approval adoption of the agenda. Do we have a motion? So we have a motion from Dr. French. Do we have a second? Second from Ms. Green. Any questions or suggestions or changes? Okay, if everybody would please vote to adopt the agenda. Not yet, okay. Okay, so we'll just take a voice vote. All those in favor of adoption of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes unanimously with everyone here that is hopefully is on Zoom. Oh, Dr. Frager's not here. Is there Lauren? Is Lauren on?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right. And my understanding is that wearing masks today is voluntary. So I've been vaccinated and the two people next to me don't mind. I'm taking mine off, but everybody do whatever they go from noise. So I gotta be able to see and not have the mask on. So the next item is to a public comment in person. Yes. We do not have any in-person comments. We do have one online public comment. Okay, which I believe is still in place. So this is from Tracy Gant Wayne. It's about the mask mandate. Hello, I'm confused why the students don't have to wear masks on bus or school. That's one of the lowest amount of vaccinated. We have a variant that's growing. What is the reason for the no masks? These kids have not been vaccinated. It's vaccinated, the schools are like major e-trainees of the disease. What are you doing? What is this about? We started out with the COVID online community. Okay. Dr. Postway, could you just monitor in your superintendent's report, reminding everybody about what the mask policy is statewide and what we're being told to do. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Item 3A Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, and as we get the slides on screen, thank you, Maggie, for doing that. We will tell the board members here where there's a lot of information to cover today. So on your table, there's a folder. If you want to follow along on that, find if you like the folder in your folder. We'll try to prepare the hard topic discussion on the 19th. And we are going to start with the COVID-19 update and then move into the ESR 3 update. And then we're going to talk about the subtle points for some of the points we need to make. Mr. Rowley?
Excellent, Postway. So I've got here for you one slide update on COVID-19. I want to cover the wave tops with the key points to the state return plan so that folks are aware of that. And then identify what you know of the items I'm still continuing to work through. First one is very appropriate, responding to that public comment that was just made. Our requirement for face masks is now governed by State Proviso 1.108. The State Department of Education interpreted that to be that school districts are prohibited from requiring students and employees to wear face masks while in any of its educational facilities. That includes all property owned and operated by the individual district. Failure to follow this policy could result in funding, state funding, or state funding. So that's the first point I wanted to make, the lit to Proviso 1.108. We will still look forward to 3%, sorry, 3-foot distancing, more than 3-foot whenever possible. If there was going to be in circumstances where we need less than 3-foot distancing, we'll review that on a case-by-case basis. None of those instances have been brought to my attention yet. Most of our classrooms are already at 3-foot distancing. We are going to continue the cleaning that we had this past year, which includes bathrooms and high-tech services twice a day. And we will fog every school 20% of the school every evening, so essentially in one week period, the entire school will be fogged. Our filtration system was highly successful this year. We upgraded all of our filters to at least Note 13, which captures greater than 90% of 1-3 micron-sized particles. Although COVID-19 is less than that, COVID transmits and it moves around through respiratory particles which are within that range. So our filtration system has been highly successful this year. We'll continue to replace those filters with the high-grade filters. Contact tracing with our nurses will continue as we did last year. Identifying those that need to be quarantined as soon as possible to help minimize the opportunity and chance for outbreaks in current school. The three major items that are still under review are the frequency and type of COVID testing. If you recall last year, we did the Binax Now antigen rapid test in school as well as the saliva test, which were analyzed by NUSC. We're currently working with Decac and other agencies to see if we want to continue with that and make modifications. Banning chorus, the core requirements, that's one that's, they took, they had some pretty strict protocols last year. Right now, all of those are made in place with the fact that we cannot mandate masks in classrooms. We're taking a real hard vote to make sure that we're creating a safe environment for our fine arts students. And event seating, whether it be indoors or outdoors at our product events, at our fine arts performances, that's another area that we will definitely.
Thank you. Moving on to the.
So will we still do the hand sanitizer stations? I mean, it seems like they've been very successful last year.
Yes, ma'am, very good point. We'll continue with emphasizing hand washing and using hand sanitizer. We have those in place throughout the schools. We'll continue to put a strong emphasis.
And for water mountains and water bottles, we'll still use some of those safety protocols.
Yes, ma'am, as of right now, drinking fountains will remain turned off and bottle fillers will be emphasized. Every day, we're adding more and more bottle fillers at schools' calls and say, hey, we need to make a strategic change, but one or more in certain places we do that. But that was how we cracked up last year's floor.
Dr. Frager?
I just have two quick questions. One is, are we still in contact visiting for our summer programs?
Yes, ma'am, we are in contact with them currently.
And then banning the proviso that we cannot enforce, but we can still encourage as long as we are in person, correct?
Absolutely.
All right, any other questions about COVID status of things? All right.
Thank you. Moving on to the ESR 3 update. The first thing we want to mention is that we are completing outreach to the community through a number of efforts. Tomorrow evening from 6:00 to 7:00, there will be a town hall meeting, the adolescent elementary. And then the following evening on Wednesday from 6:00 to 7:00, there will be a session at the Vancouver Rivers Center for Advanced Studies by Fox Street, North Charleston High School. These two areas were selected because when we analyzed the feedback that we had received today, when we look at the total number of students who are represented in this area, and the feedback that we had received in those areas was less than the feedback that we received from all the other constituent areas. So those town hall meetings will be either in person or people can participate virtually. And then also tomorrow on the website, a forum to go out to get feedback. The mirrors will be provided in the town hall meetings will be available. I wanted to mention that Steve Hammer, who's short by a little bit, who has a label website, is included for one of those. He's going to head up, help us with the program direction of the ESR program. Mr. Henry, if you'd see him, he would stand and wave his hand. Meet him, he certainly has extensive leadership and program management experience. And so he's going to be helping pull together the many ways strands of the ESR 3 planning. The next slide, then, we want to mention that the attachments in the board documents, those attachments, of course, will be available for the public tomorrow. Take this, this areas that were sort of emerging as the primary areas and summarize to you the feedback we received regarding the types of supports that the policies recommended to take. That just gives you a status report on where we are. And then I also wanted to mention at the bottom of this slide, our recommendation regarding a planning group is that the district leaders who work with the diversity of stakeholders, as we have been. And then our recommendation is for the board's audit finance committee to actually provide the oversight as we move through the three years of ESR. That's not a community agenda for a vote today, it's simply letting you know where our recommendation will be. So that's the end of the ESR report. Would I for you to pause there?
Anybody have any questions on the ESR portion of the report?
So I'm still confused on the ESR 2. I pulled the last three board updates and at the end of May, the response was the ESR 2 planning is still under development. They will receive the breakout list, they will receive something that says there's no question on ESR 2, it will be informed by what you get in ESR 3. So what is the uncovered portion of $72 million of ESR 2? I don't remember where we're at with that.
So, Mr. Henry, I want to respond to that. I think we've tried to raise the board recently.
And I'm actually looking at that, does that mean it says all the numbers?
It does not. So we, the district submitted to the state the preliminary ESR 2 plan without fully adopting the plan because we had to have access to the funds this summer for summer learning. So the amount that you showed, as shown in here, is including other categories, 17 million. There's not, the document fully developed, council of plan. So when that is developed, the plan will be resubmitted to the state for amendment. And that is largely right now being considered for acceleration schools. And I think that's the information I included in the board update, 17 million. So it's, I think, I include the fact that we will have to amend the plan to get the assessment, the reapproval by the state. But again, we need to pay to, again, spend the money for summer learning.
Sure, and so that 17 million is the only part that you did not submit a plan for?
Well, it is included in the plan, but it's not detailed now.
Probably the rest is, in fact, uncovered for what is listed.
And then, well, it's detailed in the plan that was approved, not by the state.
So then I guess my only concern is, and I don't think this can be answered today, there's a, one of the big issues we have with ESR is not to use ongoing funds, one-time funds for ongoing things. And this is being used for virtual education. And I would, at some point, I think the public and certainly the board wants to see, what are we going to do with virtual education going forward, period? In terms of how kids can live anywhere and access our programs, as well as virtual could be an option ongoing, but we're using money that's going to end. So of the, we're using 400,000 GOF in one point seven of the task. At some point, I think we want to talk about, what is virtual in its role in succeeding us do?
Yes, ma'am, good points.
Okay, any other questions on the ESR information? Okay.
All right. The agenda that we wanted to talk to the boards about today is recursive to the data that everyone had an opportunity to look at. Before I add this, I wanted to introduce to everyone our new district council, Persani's babies. Persani's would weigh to everyone. This is her first meeting with the board, I want to make sure that someone had an opportunity to acknowledge and meet her. So the next slide, then, against at the closing, the readiness gap. What we, I'll close the part about this picture on the right-hand side, but we just sort of, not the right-hand column of that slide, went through, are we aligned or where we've been? For those who aren't in on this journey with us the whole time. In the 2016-17 school year, we began working on our strategic plan. At the end of that year, we brought forward a strategic focus on ELA with more limited awareness and math addicts. So to people here, what we call, it was a small number of private schools that ordered off and beginning to pilot a new curriculum. We also said we needed to begin moving away from these sort of gross reports of data and focusing on where students are, which students are ready, which students are not, and what response we need to provide to students within the gap between where they're currently performing and where they need to perform for readiness. So we set aside a day for teacher-parent conferences. We began to look at.
She's got a message from Erica, what's her name? She's here, Dr. Frager. Somebody else texted me.
In 2018, I think we.
Okay. I hear her.
I don't know something's real with the gap between where students are and readiness. In 2019, 2020, we made improvements to that process. We had several schools, we believe, that were always moved out of the grading category, they were rid of the stage, into the next highest category, within COVID kids. And we didn't have a split assessment data from 2020. 2021, of course, we had the COVID destruction guide. We were able to assess using that and some other assessments for vast majority of our students. And we're going to share those data today. And the slide will be focusing on, using that refocus on what it means to create the readiness pathway. Back in 2016, 17, 18, we began working with local business leaders to produce this booklet. It's available online, it's called Common Skills and High Command. There were seven or eight major fields that were not able to attract enough talent in our area. And the business leaders who worked on this booklet would take the area of employment. And outline for us the academic levels that students need to achieve as well as the characteristics. So we have copies of this book of orders who were not here at that time and are about to have a hard copy again. We put it in your packet or the front page, that goes by the case you prefer to just download, copy online. We need to do this work well, as the board consultant pointed out, we that last month. We have to be really clear to move to the next slide on the differences between, the differences among inputs, outputs, and outcomes. And he gave one of the best examples that everyone's seen, understanding the difference in among the three. So he gave the example of desiring to have more students, particularly students with poverty, complete advanced placement exams at a level of three or better on the final exam. On the same with five minutes, three or better qualifies students to be granted college credit in most universities. So the input in virtual conference at all is increasing access to advanced placement courses. The output, which we often measure ourselves on, is having more students enrolled in advanced placement courses. But we really focus, as a board and district leadership team, we need to intently force that by countering where the outcome. And the outcome would be more students passing the advanced placement exam as a score of 1,000 to attain college credit. On the next slide, we begin thinking about some outcomes. There would be important students and their families for their graduating or graduated from art schools. So in addition to advanced placement exams, there'd be very real attainments that may have difference in the lives of children and their families. So being able to pass the art services vocational attitude badge, or to the ASAP, obtaining white coat scholarships, a kind of fellow scholarships, or the new Navy Street scholarships. Being able to, to call full host of students, particularly those who have not previously had access to a college education. Attaining a national career certification, colleges in this area are intended for everyone. There are career certifications that one can achieve and easily start at living with each other. Graduating high school in 15 on more college credits, graduating in high school with an associate's degree. The whole point is that readiness is more than simply a test score. But we need to know, it's not pretty difficult listening, where's too far along the way? So in the fifth grade, at what level are you on halfway to attain one of these remaining board outcomes? And that's what our efforts have been, that were disrupted the last couple of years, we're all about trying to create a readiness pathway. On the next slide, we just show a system snapshot, what that looks like. So as we go back and consider the advanced placement outcome, in order to have more students completing advanced placement, we have to go back to the early grade schools. So what this slide shows is in an elementary school, if a student is scoring from the left inside of the back, you see left side scores. And from almost any national test that we would give, we would be able to obtain a left side score. We also get scoring from SD, so there are hundreds of different careers and opportunities for advanced placement and other readiness indicators that are, are pegged to or aligned to left side scores. So we know that any student who has a 925, 925 left side score or higher in the grade is within this readiness pathway to easily get better placement courses, work readiness in high school. But if we continue to step this goal from high school without going back, look at what's happening in the elementary early grade, going from pure good back to preschool. We're going to continue to fall short of that address systematically while the issues are. And I think it's really hopeful that all of us are acknowledging this as we think about the best investments of the ESR funding are available to us. The next slide is a good issue of preview of what you will hear more about in this cartoon from Carolyn Zeltcher, Michelle Simmons, Jennifer Williams, and Buffy Roberts. So when you look overall at our scores, about 60% of our students are scoring above the national average, but 40% are not. Among that 40% are more students of color and/or poverty than those who are scoring above the 50% of our, the national norm. So what we see on this chart is looking at a breakdown by 10%, about 10% half points, from 0 to 9, then on to 19, on to 29, and so forth. And we see what percentage of our students is in every one of those bands. So if we were to take the results from students across the country, we would expect to see 10% of the students in each of these bands. But what we see is that Charleston High School has a larger percentage of students scoring at the highest level, a lower percentage of students scoring below level. But the challenge is that the majority of students who are scoring at the low level, to lower levels, are children of color and poverty. That's a nationwide trend that we need to figure out how to impact, how to break. So our goal is constantly to move more children from those, the lower percentile bands into the higher percentile bands. I will stop here to say, who does the teacher do this year in the midst of COVID? And of all of the, all the challenges that they had adjusting, these results reflect 97% to 98% of students adjusted. They are great, and they are remarkable. But we do have a way, when we look at this chart, to see the readiness gap. So if any group of students whose tan line doesn't reach that, that black line, is at the 10% mark, is scoring below the 50 percentile. And our goal is constantly concentrate on these students to move above the 50% percentile. So the last slide, again, simply reiterates everything Michelle said. What will it take, what we think about these percentile measures? There are a bunch of bullets there, but I really wanted to get serious about them. It means that we're going to have to address, or by looking at them at 10 percentile bands, we could look at four times, like the bottom, 25%. A little 25 to 75, and then the top, we're going to have to get much, much more detail and discerning as we, as we consider providing responses to move children from where they are more towards a higher level. As I've already said, is with ESR 3, we need targeted resources to the need, that's not only the mental resources, it's time and talent. We have to make sure that the experiences that students are receiving and watching create the kind of growth that's going to cost them to move into a higher achievement level. That means we have to have frequent progress checks with quarterly feedback and correction cycles. Our calendar for this coming year is spent, but for the following year, we're going to need to think about the implications of that. If we were to stop in a very quarter and ask ourselves where students are and what we need to do in the next quarter, we can't just keep marching on. We've got a little bit of time, take a look at the feedback. There has to be a relentless attentionality. Always have to be disciplined and relentless, knowing that this is our job and this is what we need to stay focused on. Accountability for all of us needs to come with support, particularly for students and teachers and teachers in the school level. And then finally, we have to have a will to change the system. We can't simply change one part of the system, one curriculum, and think that the system is going to change. We have to have the courage to address those aspects of the system that are ongoing wrong for us. And that should be sort of the introduction to the data presentation here from here tonight, afternoon, and then again on August 9th. So today's data recommendation is preliminary. We know it's a lot of information for the board, particularly when everyone might want to know how to read the graphic displays of the data. So we want to give the board the information tonight, the previous, before over, and then have a major part of our August 9th presentation, again, looking at these data and more. And also seeing the early recommendations about what, how to invest our ESR 3 funds, those two things should. I will turn it back over to this chair and.
Any, we have a lot more, I think, that's coming on that topic in SEC. But does anybody have any questions for the superintendent? Ms. Walker?
I do have a question. So I was thinking about targeting the resources and the need for more time, we don't have the calendar fit. I saw on the ESR refunding of major areas like after school. And so is there going to be any, is there a plan right now that's going to be put in place to kind of accommodate or account for some of that time that's needed? It's the first part of the question. And the second part is for community organizations that are in need of after-school programs, is there any possibility for ESR funding to flow to them so that they can get, you know, up to?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely, I'm hungry about additional time during the school, the school year and in summer and touring and the inclusion of community partners who have already achieved any results. I think right now, the top two recommendations from the parents, and my callouts is, lunch out, use more time, and support touring. So there's no doubt that those things can be connected with this kind of year, and we'll be able to do more significant qualification. Thank you.
Ms. Coach?
So.
I have a question, good afternoon.
And actually, still have the original one from February of 2016. Will this, like that, be incorporated into the student dashboards in that instant, not instant, but semestral reports and meetings with the parents to show them what's necessary? We're here five years later, but the same presentation. Um, we're here five years later, but same presentation. Do you think we can get this done this time?
I think that every single year it's going to be iteration and bringing it because what we have in time based system, this is designed for teachers to take approximately twenty-five students and the same amount of time from passing around. We have failure, acceptance of failure built into the system. So it it will be constant iterations, getting better and better at that. I don't think that changes can occur overnight, but I don't think we should give up on this key focal point. It should be the DNA of this.
I absolutely agree. I remember this and how much I thought it was the way we could change it. And then it just kind of drifted off of the top radar and I'm glad to see that it's back in this forum.
Ms. Copley?
Um, never mind. It was kind of halfway addressed just now, but thank you very much.
Okay, you sure?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right. The next item on our agenda, perfect segue into strategic education. Third, I think Ms. Garvey.
So we just have one informational item, um, only agenda today, the password and that just goes right. Um, it's also going to include Ms. Simmons and Dr. Williams. First of all, thank you very much, board trustees, Dr. Postaway for this opportunity. I think one of the things we should start with is what we are one of the few large urban school districts that open for in-person instruction. And I think the headline is that that's going to make it, that made an impact in terms of our student achievement. We'll obviously give more context for that. But I think you can't ignore the fact that it was an unusually hard year in COVID. And many in the sector, including the South Carolina Department of Education, are advising us to be very thoughtful about to what extent we use this testing data for high stakes decisions. So just want to put out there's a feeling that this data may be more noisy than is typical, given the larger environment. Also, the information that we're presenting only includes students who were tested in the fall and then again in the spring. Now that is a majority of our students between ninety-seven and ninety-eight percent overall. Um, and the final thing is, as we go through this, we're spending time on select stock slides in order to give you all a snapshot of how to interpret the information and the public. But as you know, the full deck is much more extensive and we plan to give you some time to actually look at the data and bring additional questions to the August meetings so that we can dive in deeper, if that's helpful to you. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Roberts.
I'm going to advance to the next slide. So this first slide provides a basic description.
That's what I was going to say, but we bring it as close as possible to you so they can hear. Thank you.
Um, this first slide provides a basic description of NWA's math assessment. CCSD actually uses this math assessment as an interim assessment in our grades two through eight. This assessment is a nationally normed assessment, given three times a year in the fall, winter, and spring. It provides us both with an achievement and recognition. When we talk about achievement during this presentation, we're referring to how our students are performing compared to their grade level peers in the nation, or how grade level ready our students are in math and in reading. When we discuss growth, we're referring to whether or not our students are able to grow during the course of the year from fall to spring at a typical rate or at the same rate as their grade level peers in the nation. And it's also important to note that with our math assessment, it actually has a predictive validity or is eighty-five percent accurate as predictor for how students will perform on ESSER Ready, which is our, um, our state's grade level reading and math assessment. So just so you're aware of that. Okay, so as you can see in the graph on the screen here, overall in grades two through eight, spring math results do show that CCSD experiences both high achievement and high growth. On average, in math, our students in grades two through five are performing better than before the pre, before the pandemic in both growth and achievement. In two thousand and twenty-one, although we started this fall below the floor of math achievement pre-pandemic, we managed to make up for this loss and in the year above where we were pre-pandemic in math achievement. It's important to also note that a higher percentage of our students are meeting their growth targets, most likely as a result of successful implementation of our math curriculum. In reading for these same grades, two through five, students are slightly below where they were before the pandemic. And in two thousand and twenty-one, we moved from the sixty-third median percentile pre-pandemic to the sixty-second median percentile this spring. We have more students meeting fall to spring growth targets now than we did previously with fifty-five percent of our students meeting their growth targets pre-pandemic in reading. We have now fifty-six percent of those students meeting their growth targets. In reading for our grades six through eight, we fell somewhat below where we were pre-pandemic in achievement. We went from the sixty-fourth median percentile to now with the fifty-ninth median percentile. And students meeting growth targets from fall to spring, we went from the fifty-fifth, or excuse me, fifty-five percent of our students meeting those growth targets to forty-nine percent of our students meeting their growth targets. For math, six through eight, you're above the pre-pandemic fifty-fourth median percentile. We went to fifty-fifth median percentile this spring. We're also only slightly below our pre-pandemic outcomes as students meeting their growth targets. Sixty percent of our students were meeting growth targets pre-pandemic, while fifty-seven percent are meeting their growth targets this spring. So when we look at our readiness gap, our pre-pandemic, in pre-pandemic, we had thirty-six point thirty-nine percent of our children of color and eighty-one point zero-six percent of our white children performing at or above the national average. Now, in the midst of the pandemic, the percentage of children of color increased to thirty-seven point zero-three percent performing at or above the national average. Although this is only a very modest improvement from where we were previously, this is moving in the right direction, a positive direction, even in a time of particular challenge. We still have a way to go in this area, however. Next slide, please.
So I think it's important at the headline of to say that we still need to pay attention to acceleration schools because they still fall within the low achievement and low growth quadrant. Uh, I think the good news is that we did see some progress in K one mathematics in all acceleration elementary schools. And when we looked at the last year that we had a full set of data, so that would have been two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, while the schools did not outperform pre-pandemic achievement, we did see some promising signals around the percentage of students who met their growth goals now as opposed to back in two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. And we did have some acceleration elementary schools that outperformed similar schools that had double-digit gains. I think the headline here is that high poverty schools in general exhibit in low achievement and low growth. But some of the investments that we've been making as a system, particularly around mathematics and additional support, are giving us some promising signals that we're heading in the right direction.
Please move to the next slide. Um, the data you'll see in the next few slides will show that CCSD students are strong in mathematics and both achievement and growth. Results also revealed that high achievement in reading, even more so than in math, but with lower growth than what we saw or what we see in mathematics. Growth is still within the range of what is considered average or what is expected nationally, however. Overall, thirty-eight percent of our schools have both high achievement and high growth. Twenty percent of our schools have either high achievement or high growth. Forty-two percent of our schools have both low achievement and low growth. And in reading, uh, or more, forty-eight percent of schools experience growth at or above the national average. In reading and math, CCSD has a higher percentage of students achieving at higher levels than what is typically seen in the nation, and a smaller percentage of students achieving at lower levels than what is typical in the nation. Reading has the highest median percentile by grade level in achievement, ranging from a low of the fifty-sixth median percentile in grade seven, which is still above the national average, to a high of the sixty-fourth median percentile in grade two, well above the national average. Grades three and four are above, above the average in achievement in both reading and math. Next slide. Um, you saw this, this graphic earlier when Dr. Postway alluded to it. Um, this graphic on the screen actually shows the percentage of students within each achievement band. The visual offers a snapshot of how our district's achievement appears in nation's distribution of achievement. So if the district resembles the rest of the country, then each of these bars will represent about ten percent of the district's student population. So if you just like the rest of the country, we would need to be at ten percent in each of these bands. A bar containing substantially more or less than ten percent of the district's population indicates a departure from what is typical in the nation in relation to student achievement within that particular group of students. So for example, the top bar that you see represents achievement in the lowest percentile, is anything below that tenth percentile. If we saw ten percent of our students in this lowest percentile group, then we would be in line or similar to where the rest of the country is. But we don't. We actually have less than ten percent of our students falling into this lowest category. We have eight point five percent of our students scoring in this lowest percentile range, indicating that we're actually doing better than what is typical in the nation. If we look at the last bar on screen, this shows the students falling within the highest percentile range, the ninety to ninety-nine percentile. Again, if we were like the rest of the nation, we would see about ten percent of our students performing in this range. But again, we don't. This time, we actually have more students, fourteen percent of our students, falling within this highest achievement band. So in the bars for the, well, I should say this. So basically, this means that we have more students performing at the highest level than what is typical in the nation, where they're doing what is, um, really out of the ordinary or what is typical in the nation. So when you think about it, the bars for the first and ninth percentile, um, to the fortieth to the forty-ninth percentile range, we want to see percentages that are either less than or equal to ten percent, starting at that fifty to fifty, fifty-ninth percentile, and going all the way up to the ninety-nine percentile. We really want to see percentages that are either equal to or higher than the tenth percentile. So with all of that in mind, and based on the information that you see on the screen, CCSD as a whole in reading and math has a higher percentage of students that are achieving at a higher level than what we see nationally. In other words, CCSD has a higher percentage of students performing above that national average, and this is a good thing. In the next slide. So on screen now, you're seeing the percentage of students within each of these achievement bands, this time working down by ethnicity. Although our highest two subgroups, white and other, and other represents some of our, our populations that are usually on a smaller number, like American Indian, Alaska Native, Asian, Two-Later races, Native Hawaiian, or other Pacific Islander. We actually show a high percentage of students above the national average at eighty point one-five percent and seventy-one point ninety-eight percent respectively. And we've seen, and although we've seen a modest improvement in our readiness gap, it's clear that we have work to do to close this readiness gap for our Black and our Hispanic students. Also, based on this data, an important readiness gap lever would be to ensure that our grade level text at each, to ensure grade level text at each grade level and higher reader expectations for each of these achievement bands, and to increase our access to higher level coursework and opportunities for enrichment for our students in the mid to high achievement bands. This is especially true for our Black students and our Hispanic subgroups specifically. Next slide, please. So this slide shows overall math proficiency based on our median percentile and growth based on the percentage of our students who are actually meeting their fall to spring growth targets. This is also working out by ethnicity, as well as for all students, for the fall of two thousand and twenty to spring of two thousand and twenty-one in reading. We see basically the same outcomes as we saw earlier, while half of our students, um, half of our students fell at a slightly higher percentile in the spring than did in the fall. Um, other subgroups did not. So basically, only our, um, our white subgroup was able to do that. Um, when we look at the percentage of students meeting their growth targets in each of the subgroups, only white and also our other subgroup are above the district average of fifty-three percent of students meeting their growth targets. So basically, in both proficiency and work, our Black student subgroup falls below the other subgroups. Next slide. This slide also shows the overall math proficiency based on median percentile and growth, based on the percentage of students meeting their fall to spring growth targets by ethnicity. This time we're looking at the math results, however. Again, we see basically the same outcomes. While half of our white students fall at a higher percentile in the spring than they did in the fall, other subgroups do not. White and other subgroups are above the district's overall median percentile, the third percentile in the spring. And our white and our other subgroups are above the district average of the percentage of students meeting their growth targets. The Hispanic subgroup does present close to the district average, with sixty percent of students meeting their growth targets in math, however. In both proficiency and work, our Black student subgroup does fall below our other subgroups in math. So.
So the question is, like, what, what are the implications for this? And what do we think we should do about where we believe we are at this point? Most importantly, I think we need to make sure that we're staying the course on improving our core instruction. And by that, I mean mathematics, English language arts, social studies, and science, in that order. That's important because if you can get the core instruction very tight, there's less of a need for remediation. We're able to adjust in real time and ensure more of our kids are ending a grade level ready for the next, rather than having to catch kids up or remediate, which is a big investment of our scope and resources right now in low-growth, low-achieving schools. The specific strategies for doing that are outlined here, and it's something that we would prioritize within an ESSER investment strategy. But to pull out a few of them, one is to make sure that we're launching a new ELA curriculum that integrates the five things that are most important in solid reading instruction, the need for awareness, phonics, vocabulary building, reading comprehension, and reading fluency. Right now, we've got a strong phonics program in the early childhood that we need to build out the rest. We're going to pilot that in the acceleration schools this fall, and we aim to pilot in more schools in spring semester for almost a full system rollout next year. The advantage of the ESSER process will move faster with our regular investments. Second is making sure that we're really doing a system-wide benchmark assessment program. Dr. Postaway alluded to the importance of having regular continuous improvement cycles, where you check in to see where you are and then do something different based on what's going well and what's not. We're going to put in place here this year consistent benchmark assessments, second to eighth grade in mathematics, and have some recommended assessments, second to eighth grade in ELA. Now, they're suggested because right now we're going to have three different ELA curriculums on the ground, each of which has a modestly different scope and sequence. But our hope here is to build the habit at the schools, particularly low-growth, low-achievement schools, of regularly looking at study work, figuring out what went well, what didn't, and what that means, who are we teaching the next day? The hope is that then from this, build up a continuous improvement routine that leads to improved outcomes. And I think one of the other things to kind of call out is that we really want to use this opportunity to invest in teacher and leader capacity. So one of the things that we're doing in this year is investing professional development around this continuous improvement cycle. We're having conversations with Paul Brand Brex and Twan, who literally wrote the book, uh, that can read the continuous improvement, to have another cohort of schools outside of the acceleration schools getting additional support on continuous improvement. On the next slide, we'll go into more detail on what we need to make sure that we are still doing around our low growth and low achievement. I think it usually takes in the research three years for a school to turn around. We are finishing up year one. I do not think we lost last year in the acceleration schools in terms of building a foundation and a routine. But now we have to start seeing real progress, as Dr. Postaway said, in terms of academic achievement. And to do that, we are going to make sure that we continue to have leading educators supporting our work around uh, that continuous improvement cycle, now in both math and ELA. In addition, we're going to have to give extra support to our middle schools under Dr. Williams's leadership to make sure that there's more support around this idea of accelerating instruction. So if you talk about math instruction at the middle school level, it is simply a it is simply a lot harder because the elementary schools didn't have the same foundation that they have now. So illustrative math, middle schools are coming in without that, and they have to teach prior knowledge in order to have students actually get into grade level content. The best way to do that is to teach it real time. So what's the standard percent frame? What's the prior math that's needed? Review that quickly and then jump into the grade level work, not start back at third grade, but jump into grade level work. That's a skill set we need to do more to support our middle school teachers to do that well. And then finally, I think we can't ignore, and I want to make sure we keep reinforcing for us and for the public, that this is the year that a lot of our students went through a lot at home and in school. And to make sure that they're coming back in school, many of them for the first time at 18 months, we really need to make sure that we have extra support programs in place. That includes more on time I cast, as Mrs. Coats called out earlier, like a Saturday school, after-school programs, the investment in fundamental reading in our summer program. But also includes access to mental health and other supports in the school site so that the primary focus can remain academics because we're thinking about students' social and emotional learning too.
Thank you for that, Ms. Bellcher. I want to spend some time on elementary outcomes based on math data and tests, but before which is a time limit of framing and orientation. It's the next one. Thank you. So from lots of practice, research, just understanding that, as Dr. Postaway and I want to say this, Bellcher alluded to, sometimes when children come from low-income families, they often start school already behind their peers and more affluent families that can have long-lasting impact. So that means we have to be really strategic in the types of support that we provide and we offer to close the achievement, preparation, and readiness gap that exists between groups of children. In the slides you will see in a moment, we have grouped our students into four distinct categories based on poverty indexes. You can see it on the screen before you. Low poverty, low mid-poverty, mid to high poverty, and then our high poverty. For the purpose of examining data with life demographics, we refer to this approach as schools like ours. So this visual, this two-by-two, referred to in schools like our dictionaries as a quadrant chart, shows where students are performing as measured by both achievement and growth indicators. You'll be able to see where groups of schools fall in terms of getting students to grade level readiness and ensuring that they're growing every year. The vertical axis line up and down the screen represents the 50th percentile of what we can relate with compared to average. The horizontal axis line shows us the median growth percentile. The four categories we'll pay attention to today are low achievement, high growth, low achievement, low growth, high achievement, high growth, and high achievement, low growth. The next two slides are simply a key for you to reference that outlines poverty index and abbreviation for the next subsequent few slides. You can advance. Thank you. Okay. So here, you'll notice all of our low-poverty schools are experiencing both high achievement and high growth in reading measures. Schools at the very top of the screen are experiencing higher growth, and those farthest to the right are experiencing higher achievement levels. I think it's of note and a commendation to these schools, students, families, communities, and particularly leaders, that the schools have been able to do both, maintain high levels of achievement and show growth every year as a celebration for this cluster, this group of schools. Next slide. Thank you. Here you'll see, with this cluster of moderately high-poverty index schools, reading achievement and growth indicators are spread across three fields or categories, if you will. I think the takeaway here is the group of three schools demonstrating relatively high achievement and growth, whereas we do have a majority falling in the low achievement, low growth category. But I will call to your attention the fact that many are on the verge, on the cusp of getting more and more students to grade level readiness and that 50th percentile as indicated on that vertical axis line. And here depicted mathematics. This is the mathematics slide of our highest poverty schools. As described previously, this particular cohort of schools are generally in the low achievement, low growth space. Why low achievement is the current reality? The priority, the focus is for all schools to demonstrate solid growth each year. You will notice that there is a small group of schools above the horizontal axis, where they are outliers, if you will, as well as a cluster of schools approaching average growth that are also showing solid progress in mathematics. The charge for the leaders and administrators who work with these schools is to target the right curriculum, resources, and supports to close these existing gaps. You might remember, if you were on the board a couple of years ago, we had a presentation by associates with N W P A, and he spoke of the single sure definite waiting to close these gaps is with solid growth year after year after year. Dr. Williams, what topic is it about?
A little low.
Good. So thank you all so much. I'm not going to belabor the point and speak about this quarter and two-by-two graphs that Senator Gray, I want to explain. But I would, however, like to reiterate that the farther away from that vertical axis you see schools, the more achievement that they're experiencing, and the higher above that horizontal axis that you see schools, the more growth that they're experiencing. Now, when you look at the middle schools, you're going to notice that we have fewer middle schools than elementary schools. But what that does is gives us an opportunity to see more clearly how schools are performing as it relates to other schools within their poverty bands. Next slide, please. So here you can see that with the elementary schools, we have our middle schools assigned poverty bands as well. So I'll pass the two references as I go through my presentations. Next slide. Thank you. So in order to highlight the impact of poverty on these similar schools, I'm going to focus on math, math performance within all poverty bands to highlight the achievement and growth in this area for our middle schools. So this is our first poverty band, which is low. And as Mr. Smith stated, we see high achievement and high growth for these schools. Now, we know this is what we typically have seen with these schools, but I'd like to point out on this graph that you can see there's still room for movement in the areas of achievement and growth if you look at the proximity of schools as it relates, again, to that far right and the top of the graph. Next slide, please. So schools in this quadrant chart are schools that fall within our low to mid-poverty range. As you can see, we see similar growth and achievement for these schools like we saw with our low-poverty schools. And they're all falling in that high achievement, high growth quadrant. Next slide, please. So now, when we look at the data for our mid to high poverty school, we start to see where schools are moving from solid positions in those high achievement and high growth part. These schools, as you see on this graph, are categorized into categories. Now, I'd like to point out that all schools in all schools on this graph are on the verge of moving to either high growth or high achievement. Now, our goal, as you've heard numerous times, is to move towards high growth, which will ultimately impact achievement in a positive manner. Next slide, please. So as we have seen in some other data points, the higher the poverty bands, the more likely we are to see a decline in achievement and also sometimes in growth as well. So we do, however, see promise depicted here in that a few of these schools, a few, are on the verge of experiencing high growth, high achievement, or both. So as we see these schools are on a positive trajectory, we would like to put all of our thoughts, our resources into focusing on what's working well, what's not working, and truly focusing on those things that will produce positive growth outcomes within these schools.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. We're going to shift a bit to FastBridge and a bit more friendly. With our early learners, our focus is primarily on teaching complicational early literacy and university skills. So the assessment tool we utilize, FastBridge, measures progress on milestones, the development of skills, and it's administered by teachers. First, we look at math, where measuring the extent to which our students have learned and mastered content and skills. It's administered via computer. It is important to note that fast and math measure differently, and that fast doesn't naturally align, predict, or seamlessly give us an indication of how students will perform in the latter grades. So a few big highlights, our takeaways. Overall, early childhood measures are trending in the right direction. That's a celebration from our perspective. We have approximately 70% of our kindergarten and first grade students on track for grade level readiness in mathematics. And more than half of K-1 students on track to be able to read effectively. So we're going to take a few moments to unpack some of those big highlights further. FastBridge is reported as low risk. You can associate that with readiness. Some risk, students are approaching readiness, and then high risk. These students are not quite ready, they're not just on track. This particular slide shows the early reading outcomes in low-poverty schools for the fall of 2020 and the spring of 2021. For each of the schools, you will find two bars. The first bar shows where students were in the fall of 2020, and the second bar shows where the same students were in the spring this year. Similar to the math slide we saw a few moments ago of the same demographics, the overwhelming majority of students are exhibiting low-risk factors, which tells us they are ready to become solid readers in large part. Eight out of the 10 schools on this slide increased the percentage of students falling in that low-risk category. And seven of the 10 schools had single percentages in the high-risk category last week. Here, on this slide, we see the early math results for students in moderately high-poverty schools. With overall strong results in mathematics across our entire system, we find here that all of the schools show progress in reaching this toward readiness. There continues to be, though, a sizable group of students demonstrating some risk factors that require additional supports. However, 10 out of 10 of the schools increased the percentage of students in the low-risk category. And finally, with this final slide, we're showing our highest-poverty elementary schools' early math outcomes toward the spring. We found that many of the schools made solid progress from fall to spring, which is depicted here. Specifically, 16 of the 19 schools increased the percentage of students in the low-risk category. You will see that a majority of the schools on this slide increased the percentage of students demonstrating readiness from fall to spring. While we are pleased and very proud of this progress, we also realize that there continues to be a concerning number that is showing some risk factors, which then turns into a responsibility for us to continue to focus on early learning, to continue to focus on the right curriculum instruction, and to leverage the S or three package that we have before us to focus on the right, meaningful opportunities for children. Here, Ms. Bellcher.
So the last slide goes into what is the implications, then, for our early childhood results? I think that the headline here is, again, I think it proves the hypothesis that the investment in a rigorous curriculum in early childhood of 4K as well as kindergarten and first grade is starting to show some wins, and we need to continue that work. So creative curriculum, early bridges, open court, where any new phonics program is embedded in the new curriculum. And Hagerdys for all early childhood classes is very consistent. Hagerdys is something that we're bringing into K-1 so that all of the schools are also working with the need of awareness because that's particularly good for the need of awareness. Additionally, we obviously need to provide professional development for our early childhood teachers to be able to use these materials well to know when they're on track and when they're not on track, and to adjust accordingly. So that continues to be an investment. And then, I think, like the state is starting to outline more clearly, and as we step back in the opportunity to invest in the S or dollars, let's make sure that we have access to early childhood to every family that needs it, which may mean thinking about space that we need for early childhood classrooms, and I mean particularly 4K, and thinking about, as we already have, subsidizing early childhood certification to increase the number of highly qualified staff who can teach in early childhood classrooms. That does conclude our presentation. We're beginning here with boards to feedback and questions.
I had a few questions. Good afternoon. Hello? Just curious, when you were talking in reference to the, you said the ELA, you said that there were three different, I guess there were three different ones that you were going by? Is there a reason that we're using three? And how soon will it, is it just one that we're going to be able to use? And then you said something about a scope and a sequence. Exactly what do you mean by the scope and sequence of a... And I guess this is in reference to verbal language.
Sorry, I used education ease there, or I appreciate you calling me out on it. When we talk about scope and sequence, or we're talking about curriculum, it's the order in which we teach things and how deeply we go. Are we just going to cover the high level of the topic, or are we going to be really in-depth so that kids are able to analyze?
Okay, so how is that scope and sequence actually considered?
Yeah. And then on the three curriculums, part of this is like the transition from the state. So this coming year, right in the state of South Carolina, the state approves curriculum standards, and then they often have an approved list of curriculum, which they will subsidize for districts. Right now, the state's behind on this effort. So they're going to reevaluate their standards this coming year. And then the following year, they're going to put in place what's going to be on the approved curriculum list. So that's two years out from now. We already have, on the grounds of two state curriculums that have already been approved, which is Journeys and Literacy by Design. We're going to move more quickly towards having one cohesive curriculum, ideally by We're going to move more quickly towards having one cohesive curriculum, ideally by next year. But one of the things we want to make sure that we're doing is staying aligned to the state and aligned to the research. So that's a big push for us. So the earliest would be next year, and the reason they're free on the ground is because the state has improved too, which we've had the last few years. And the Acceleration Schools will be piloting a new curriculum this fall.
Thank you.
I wanted to go back to the slide. I don't know what crazy number it is, but the one with all the ten percent. Oh, I see. I think it's page five or six. So I appreciate what you're doing here by comparing all bands to the average, but I'm wondering if we could compare each band to the national average for that same band. I think that might tell us more about how we're doing compared to the national average. So if we look at, we have zero to nine band, for instance, eight and a half percent of students are there nationwide, what's the difference? If that makes sense.
Actually, what this is doing, I know this is a pretty difficult visual sort of graph of arms, crowd, to be honest. So I think it does a really good job of letting us see some things that we wouldn't necessarily see by just different on bands. So each one of these, like for instance, if you look at that zero to the nine percentile, the nation, like what is typical in the nation, or where the nation, what's the nation doing, that's ten percent of your students would be there if we're looking at what's typical in the nation, right? But we don't have ten percent there. We have eight point five percent. So we actually have less students than what you see the average in the nation.
I guess it doesn't make sense to me that every band would be a ten percent in the nation.
Basically, you have to think about it like this. When you look at like a distribution of where students are falling, those, I guess I want to think about it as this. If you have like a, like a hundred people in a line, right? A hundred people in a line, wherever that person is in the line, represents what their, what their achievement level is. So when you distribute that, when you look at that, you're going to have ten of those people, right, are going to show up in this one, and then ten in the next, ten in the next. It's just how evenly distributed. So each, and each student, you have an average. You're comparing it to the basic.
Exactly. So when you're thinking about it like this.
Maybe this should be better if it's around, it's a low two in the week. So I don't want to, I don't want to take up time.
And some of it is that it's a norm reference data set map, so they can force the curve, right? Because it's the N W E A set versus like all test scores nationally.
So one thing that I did want to ask that is more related to assessments in general. So we have the M.A.T., we have FastBridge, we have S.E.R.A.I.D., and then some of the curriculum that you're implementing has its own assessments.
Correct.
And this is probably not something you'd answer today, but can you come back to us and show us how many instructional days are lost for grade level or assessment? Because M.A.T. takes more, you know, more than one day, three times a year. And I don't know if FastBridge and M.A.T. go to the same students or separate populations, but from what I understand, the M.A.T. curriculum that we're implementing has its own experiments, which are multi-day, that's wild. So I would just like a better understanding of how much time we're taking from instruction to accomplish these measurements, because that impacts the students' ability to learn as well.
Yes, ma'am, we can get that for you.
Thanks.
So. I am, you know, I'm still a little bit about this large gap. Still confused with all of, we're still talking about this large nation that separates the two. I'm hearing about the fact that we're piloting different, you know, and, like I said when you told me, talking about how we define, piloting different programs. I believe we have enough data to show where our students are, because you have shown some of that. But now, again, when we have a very large portion of our ones that have been given through the S.E.R.A.I.D., there has to be some type of program, happily, trying to close this gap and identifying exactly where the, where he's going to be for us to get kids to where they can do. I believe some measures that have been talked about today on, on after-school program, or auditory, or, or whatever the case is, or even maybe deeper toward the issue may be, but, but I'll be honest with you, I am, I am falling on the inside that we are still, with this large measure of gap of Caucasian students and African-American students. We're still talking about this large gap. So I'm entering the point to say that we have to identify how we want to close this gap and not continuously talk about piloting more programs on top of what we're already doing. Something has to work, because what we're not enjoying is not working, because the gap is still growing. My question is, what are we doing in depth of closing the gap without adding new programs along the way?
So.
It's a large question, and I mean, it is a very.
I don't, I don't think you're expecting a quick answer, but I'm going to give you the honest answer. I can't point to a single district in the nation that's an urban district of the diversity that we have that's doing radically better than we are. I think that's important to call out, because the answer is that we all are struggling with this in the system, and there are no shortcuts. There isn't a million dollars you can spend that's going to solve the problem. You have to pull multiple levels at the same time. These schools that serve primarily African-American or Latinx kids in poverty tend to have the least experienced teachers. They tend to have the highest turnover. They tend to have the least experienced leaders. They tend to have the highest turnover. We have not had consistent core academic curriculum as a system in anything but mathematics. We're behind the times on the national agenda of rigorous curriculum, which matter not because what's in front of kids is the only thing, but because that moves the system faster. If a teacher knows what they have to teach, they spend less time figuring out what needs tomorrow and more time figuring out why you don't understand, then how can I help you? So I, I think it would be unrealistic if I said we're going to fix the problem next year or the year after. We're going to see a lot of progress. If you dig into the early childhood low poverty data, I think there are promising signals that the students of color in those schools are not just behind their peers, that we see more kids on track on average in those schools than we do in the upper grades in the same school. That's a promising signal, because if you can build on that foundation, which again, we've seen in some of our, our Acceleration School that's solely early childhood in North Togston, moving into the first grade in its theater school, we see some strong achievement there. Then build on that, we're going to see growth over time. But we've got to do what we're doing now, which is continue to invest in our people, professional development, attracting more talent to those schools, and keeping the talent in those buildings long term. And the talent needs to look like the kids that they serve in a more diverse community, because as we know, cultural competency also matters. The second thing we've got to do is we've got to move as fast as we can in the curriculum, which we are in those Acceleration Schools. We have to do that balance. We cannot overwhelmingly engineer for too much change, so that the change blows up, and then we'll react to the reaction.
We're not about to be, or trying to.
Have to do something that's new versus trying to sharpen the saw and get better. And then I think we've done some good work this year, building community partnerships and organizations like Beyond Our Walls that are there outside of the school buildings to add additional supports. They're going to be better than we are at that work, and it's critically supporting the kids that, and their families. We get more kids in school, more free color. Unfortunately, one of the hard realities of this last year is that children who were at home for the bulk of the year were predominantly Latinx and African-American, predominantly from our higher, our higher poverty schools. That disproportionate amount of days in person also affected our outcomes. So I'm optimistic that going to fully enforce that here is going to shift this. I want to just make sure you hear, we are equally disappointed and infuriated that we didn't make more progress. There's nothing more important than ensuring that all of our kids are attractive, and they're true potential. But then, but there are no shortcuts. Then people think that just by spending millions of dollars, well, as we solve problems, not. We have to invest in people, we have to do the culture, reinforce it, and we have to reward that talent.
When you get a quick while, those questions are not actually in the bar. Are you, I didn't. So speaking of investing in people, one of the things that comes up for me is the professional development, because of the, and randomly, how much of these types of math to really document in their point of practice. And so I'm wondering, if you care to talk about your use of S.E.R.A.I.D. for instructional coaches and things like that. I know it's not on more funding, but it's funding for the next three, four years. And that has been a significant amount of time to develop some of that practice.
And so I'm just wondering if that is something that is being considered.
It is. I, I think we're still trying to figure out what our options are in terms of common conversations with our school of education partners, too. Can we do things like a master's degree for reading coaching and, and help subsidize that as well as have participants pay? But that would increase our number of reading coaches. We would obviously tap into folks of color to, because those jobs tend to be predominantly white women. I also think we're, we're adding an extra hour of the work week for all Acceleration teachers to build time into professional development. So that's for things like stepping back on student work and pivoting quickly to make sure that we're increasing student learning. And every Acceleration School has access to both a reading coach as well as a math coach. And, you know, I, I think one of the things to call out is that it's not just Acceleration Schools. We have other schools that are struggling too. And I think one of the things that I admire about the leadership of Ms. Simmons and Dr. Williams is that they're trying to pull some of this work into those schools and then already build on the strong coaching that they've done to those principals around making sure that we're using data-informed instruction too, so that we're not privileging some schools over others, but all learning, to get to the point that Reverend Mack said so eloquently, to make sure that the kids we're most worried about are getting the most support.
Thank you.
Ms. Coates?
So I'm going to ask three questions. Two are pretty simple and technical. Ms. Williams, on page eight, I'm Ms. Simmons, I'm sorry. On page eight, just very, and I'm sure the link takes you to every school. I see we've kind of, in some of these slides, you couldn't do every single school. On the right, the, the spring, the fall to spring, what is that? Is that number of students, or is that, how, how do I look at that when I see a thirty-eight in the fall and a, and a lower number, thirty-three in the spring?
That's actually the median percentile. So basically, what that tells you is that half of your students are scoring above, oh, I'm so sorry. I keep forgetting I'm not loud. What that, it's basically focused on the median percentile. It's providing the fall median percentile and the spring median percentile. So basically, what that number tells you is that half of your students are performing above that number or above that percentile, and half of your students are performing below that percentile.
So I'm looking at the right-hand side, African-American students, the fall of twenty, it was thirty-eight. Is that thirty-eight percent of your students getting to the fifty percent median percentile? What is that, thirty-eight?
Yes, it's basically telling you that, that African-American students in the fall, half of those students were scoring above the thirty-eighth percentile. They were at least the thirty-eight percentile or above.
So that represents the thirty-eighth percentile, and half our kids were, were above it. But we dropped in the spring because half our kids were only above the thirty-three percentile. So am I, I'm reading that, that it represents a backwards movement.
The fall to spring does tell you that, in that particular instance, that the median percentile was lower in the spring than it was in the fall.
Okay, and that's what you see in four out of five of those categories. And then when, when you mentioned that a new ELA in Acceleration Schools, piloting it and hoping to move it more rapidly, are you putting the same ELA in all Acceleration Schools at the same time? Well, they all start with the same, you said we're going to implement a new ELA in Acceleration Schools. I want to know if that means all of them.
Yes, with one exception where there's a high-performing principal who's already, who's got a curriculum that she's opting to do herself, but others, yes.
So we'll have a baseline for at least Acceleration Schools get everything at the same time.
That's correct.
That's very important. And then, yeah, and I, I appreciated your answer, and I, I had done a, just kind of been tracking, you know, I love my tables. And you're right. We've heard for multiple years that all of this is disproportionately affected by quality teaching and leadership. But it was the schools that are continually on our highest poverty list in this presentation that got new principals that had never worked in CCSD or had never been principals before for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. We still know that's creating a problem, and we're still perpetuating what you said was a problem. If you look at the teach, the principals that were pulled out of some of these schools for central office local positions, which I applaud anyone whose career wants to advance, but if you look who it got hired, in some cases, it's literally their first principalship, and I'm basing that on the press releases. So I, I, I don't know how we get past this. We know this is a problem, and we perpetuate the problem.
I think you're, you're right, ma'am. We did not make sufficient progress in the leadership priority. I mean, one of the things that Dr. Postaway asked me to work with Mr. Brigman and Ms. Nichols and others as I came in was leadership, and COVID made us, held us back on some of that work. I think the good news is that Ms. Simmons, Dr. Williams, we've started up that work and aim to have something that would be a larger overall strategy on leadership development to share with the board. But I also think, when I look at the Acceleration Schools specifically, and I, I think you're speaking not just to Acceleration.
No, in this case, it's actually not the Acceleration Schools, but it's these other very high-poverty schools.
Right. We need to, I mean, I think the other thing, which we have, again, we haven't had an opportunity to do this, is explore what incentives we can do to get some of our high-performing principals to consider an acceleration or a high-poverty school. It's not a match for everyone. I think we all know that. We want people who want to go there and want to make a difference and want to work with those kids. But I also think there are ways in which the system can do a better job of incenting that. And we've talked about options, which we hope to bring to the board over the course of the next year as we step back on this leadership strategy, but we don't want to do anything in absence of a strategy. And I also think, before we can continue to double down and invest in Acceleration Schools as a strategy, we need to see more results.
Thank you.
Reverend Mack?
I'm still concerned.
You should be.
I am still concerned that the needle has, even though I hear of the, the gains in certain areas, but the gains is still based on the low measure. And I'm still concerned, I'm, I'll be honest with you, I'm still not sold on the fact that, that we have a, a strong plan in place to close this gap that we have been talking about for so many years. And, and maybe just enough has been presented to the entire board, or to me, being a part of the board, sitting here, hearing it, to convince me that, that we are on the right track moving forward and closing this gap. I strongly believe that we have to go deeper into where we know the low-performing areas are. Now, I'm not saying that we just carve out just African-American kids and, and not move the needle on Caucasian kids. We have to move the needle in both sections, right? We have to continue to move it. But we know where the struggling part is with the African-American students, and I believe that we have to do more there to move that meet, that meter at a faster rate, given, based on the research that we have identified in those particular schools. So, so I'm going to be honest with you, I am not convinced, and I am, I'm troubled by where we are still at this very point. And so I hope that at, at our next session, or some type of workshop to where this board and senior-level staff can have, to where we can make sure that, that we're on the same page and can support the effort that's moving forward in closing this gap and continuing to move the bar in both sections. That's where I am.
I hear you, sir. Thank you.
Dr. French?
Dr. French?
I go, the concerns that have been raised. And I, one thing that does trouble me about this data, that looking at data this way, is there's clearly, we're trying to, we're pairing low achievement with poverty, but we don't know that that's the root cause. We, it's possible that the root cause is that these schools don't have the resources they need. Like, you know, consistency and T, with teachers staying, you know, to have high turnover rates. Maybe they don't have everything that they need. And I am still hoping that you're going to show us data at some point that talks about how our special needs kids are doing in these categories. Where is that? What's happening with those groups? Are we seeing the same kind of achievement gap between white students and other, uh, other minorities? Because if that's the case, it almost certainly is because we're giving more resources to special, to white special ed kids. So I, I want to see that part of it because I think that's a, a very important piece of this, of the story. We have a lot of special needs kids. Some of them are in, you know, some of them happen to be, uh, grouped in one school, for instance, like, um, some schools have maybe 25% of their population is special ed. And none of this is really showing me what's the range of performance, like, at some of the, some of the acceleration schools. I don't know if there's a lot of kids who are really outperforming, you know, performing really well, achieving, growing. And then there's some kids that are not performing at all for whatever reason. And I think looking at different ways, different cross-sections of this, different intersectionalities of what students are facing may get us to better solutions.
Yep. And I, I think that you'll find in the more comprehensive deck that was included in the board, um, materials, that it does have information that breaks out at the way top level, special needs kids compared to kids who do not have an IEP, gifted and talented, English language learners as compared to native speakers, online versus in-person. So please do dig into that data and we'll come to the August meeting with more information on that. It, it's the more, it's the thicker.
It's in Board Docs.
It's in Board Docs, thank you, Ms. Heder. Um, so that could be it. And, and just to call out that because we organize it by poverty doesn't mean we believe that poverty is causal. It's just a way for us to group similar schools to show, uh, positive outliers and give a sense of that, not because we believe that poverty is the key thing, um, or only thing that may be affecting certain or anything. I just want to make sure I make that explicit. And, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to present to the board with, with the hard work of Ms. Simmons, Dr. Williams, and Ms. Roberts who did a great job on the data. I think that it's hard to see the forest for the trees, but compared to other large districts of our size who serve a similar population of students, we're actually well-positioned to make a big difference for next year because we don't have the COVID gap that many others have that affects the whole community. We have a targeted gap, the gap that existed pre-COVID, and that gives us the opportunity to use the COVID investments to really make a difference for those kids. But we have to fight, fight the right, find the right balance of moving fast enough to do it well, but not overwhelm our already overwhelmed workforce and make sure that we can sustain the change long-term. So again, appreciate the opportunity and the critical feedback.
Hey, we had one more question, Ms. Darby.
Yep, so some questions, comment slash comment. One, just thank y'all for putting this all together along with all the million other things you do in COVID. Um, I agree with you about there being this targeted gap. I think we are miles ahead of other school districts because of the work that y'all have done this last year. And since I've been on the board, one, I really feel, I, I mean this with all due respect to all the school leaders out there, that our focus really has to be on those school leaders. You know, if we had, where, where we have the strongest school leaders who can move quickly and adapt, who have experience, who've dealt in lots of different kinds of situations, who can target, oh, I see this issue. We're doing really well here. I, some of you all are sitting at these tables, you're not principals anymore, but, so I really would love to see that focus on making sure, you know, we have, that we have the strongest leaders possible in every one of our schools. And if we have a, a good leader, but they need some extra help to become a fantastic leader, that we put those efforts in place. That, that's one challenge. I, I, and I feel like sometimes we might have a teacher who's struggling and because we, everybody's so busy, we may not say, gosh, we gotta, gotta really address this issue. So I, I would love to see that in, in all the time that you have, but I'd love to see that real focus on the school-based leadership and, and teachers, if somebody's struggling, let's address it, not wait till the spring. You know, let's get that. And I, I think we'll start to see it. And you can look at some of the schools that were down in the far left when we first got on the board and they're, they're growing. So we've just got to get them on the achievement side, so.
That's right. If you dig into the, those results, you're going to see that there are some schools that are very much positive outliers and it, it does align to the experience and expertise of the principal. I think the challenge is we can't build a system based on the hero principle. We've got to make sure we've got a system that supports the average principal to have above-average results. And we're not quite there yet.
Thank you all so much.
Um, I just had one little comment and I'm sorry, I was just trying to jump in and say, um, thank y'all very much for what it is that y'all presented. And as I sit here and listen, you know, having a son that has autism, we're thrown in that category. So I wanted to know, how do we fit out, just like, uh, Dr. French asked? How do our children fit out amongst everyone else and being thrown in those numbers? Also, when we're talking about the poverty index, let's just be real and say poverty does play a big effect, but we don't want to keep, you know, targeting the black people and saying that that's, it's not the only problem, but it is the problem. But when we allocate appropriately where things should be, then we shouldn't, you know, keep running into these issues. Um, also, I'm just thinking right now, we have to really start figuring out a way to stop fostering relationships all the way around. So while we're building relationships with our, with our students and our teachers, we really need to make sure that we're starting to foster our relationships with our parents. We get them on board with all the other training and accountability that we're holding our teachers, uh, with, too. So I'd just like to see some, uh, type of things implemented to where parents are not just incentives, but also some accountability because, uh, parents and educators, we can't keep taking all the brunt work. So we got to make sure that the parents are heard and included, but also held accountable also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Darby? All right, back to you.
Got it. Okay. Um, next on the agenda, um, we're section five, other board committees, five A is audit and finance. Ms. Green or Mr. Kennedy? Does anybody have any questions about anything on the other, um, we appear to try to answer this? Does anybody have any questions now or on any of those audit and finance items? Okay. The next item on the agenda, five B, policy BEDH. Dr. French?
Hello, thank you. Uh, this is a modification of policy BEDH, which is our temporary public comment, uh, policy that we put in place because of the pandemic. And the only change is to remove the requirement to wear a face mask for people who come in person to make a public comment. The, um, everything else stays the same, including the ability to submit online comments for those that don't feel comfortable coming downtown. So entertain a motion.
Motion approved. Second.
So I would like to ask if the board would be willing to mirror the motion that was made to create this? And Kate, when you made that motion, it also included a section to suspend the policy requiring a second reading. So we don't have to have the second reading in August and it can be implemented. Would you be willing to amend your motion for that?
I would, I would. So, so I move to approve first reading of the revised policy and suspend whatever BG, BGD. Um, suspend that policy so we don't have to have second reading. Second. Second reading. Thank you. Uh, I was saying my second. Oh, second, good, okay, second, second. Second, all right, good.
Okay. Um, so, and, and just so I make sure I understand, that would mean if this is approved unanimously, it would go to the board meeting on the consent agenda this evening? And then if, when approved at that time, it would be in effect?
Yep.
Okay. All right, just so everybody's on the same page. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I'll ask for the votes.
I need to take a voice vote, please. Board docs is not allowed.
All right. Uh, or voice, voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Copeland, would you like to vote?
Aye.
You? The motion passes unanimously, or I, I should say all opposed, sorry. All right. If the, by voice vote, the motion passes unanimously. And so I assume that will go to the consent agenda.
Yep. Okay. Um, next item on the agenda is six A, the Charleston Promise. Do we have a hard copy of this at our, in our folders?
Just in Board Docs.
In Board Docs.
Um, Ms. Darby, the only thing that I will add is that it is now achieve Charleston.
Good, thank you.
So if we could move forward with, uh, calling it achieve Charleston. The, um, the ad hoc committee, uh, the board members, as well as the district staff to work really hard on this. Happy to take any questions that you have and also make you aware that we do have a series of meetings, um, coming up through the month of July. Um, so you can, um, look forward to hearing more information and more developed packet in August.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Waters?
So if I'm correct, this is just for us to be considering, so event, as you continue to massage it when it comes to the board for approval?
So it, no, I actually think, I mean, those are the goals, those are the, um, those are the goals, the purpose, the, the vision, the mission. Um, and so in August, we're actually going to be submitting a fuller scope of what this program will look like over the next three years as it's pivoting. And so this is for you to see the progress and, uh, give any input if you have some.
Thank you. It looks great.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions? All right. Um, next item is six B, legislative update.
Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Postaway. Good afternoon, how are y'all doing? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great, great. I just have a few, uh, updates. One is a regulatory, uh, update. The State Board of Education held their board meeting today and they approved, uh, 33 virtual learning plans for, uh, school districts and consortiums. That included the Low Country Education Consortium. Uh, in terms of legislative, uh, there would be the first hearing for the Senate Judiciary Subcommittee on Redistricting that will be held tomorrow and there will be an ongoing process. And, uh, our firm is also pulling together a list of all legislation that was enacted that impacts, uh, board actions and, and their responsibilities. So, uh, we'll have that, um, by the next, uh, board meeting or, uh, next month. We'll pull that together for you. But that's all I have on the regulatory and legislative front. And I would like to, I can answer any questions at this time.
Does anybody have any questions? First Campbell? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Keep it up. Okay. Um, next on the agenda, item six C, board development proposal from A.J. Cravill. Do you want to talk about that? Because it's on.
So, members, you, uh, received in your packet, uh, a proposal that came from, uh, Mr. Cravill as far as a proposal for partnering with the board, uh, over the next, uh, year. I know Dr. French has sent a series of, of, uh, questions, uh, some of those have been answered. By the way, there were, there were great questions, uh, that was raised and I believe everyone was included on that email, was there?
You know, I don't think people were included on the responses.
They weren't. We got them when we got here today, they're in this folder.
Oh, okay, they're in, okay, good.
So I'm not sure if everyone have an opportunity to, uh, peruse those, but, uh, we'll entertain a discussion of, of concerns or suggestions or ideas. Again, this is just a proposal, um, uh, for a scoop of work. And if the board desires to do or, or to engage as such, or if there are more questions that needs to be answered, um, at, at another later time from Mr. Cravill, uh, that can be arranged as well. Uh, again, the, the outcome is for us to, uh, to have some type of working ability as we move forward as a board, to develop, uh, skills and practices that will be more efficient, uh, to the level of making, uh, clear and sound decisions and helping us as we course over these next several months. So you may have had an opportunity to peruse those and you may have had an opportunity to look at those questions that was asked and answers that was given. So I'll pause right there and if there's any questions or concerns.
There, there were, the questions were working on that packet right there? No?
Yeah, it says board member. I was going to say it looked like a board member request for information format that I saw when I came in.
I didn't see it, so.
I don't see it in Board Doc and I don't see it in our packet. I don't see it either.
Yeah, it doesn't address the.
Yeah, these were some other issues on the agenda.
Other question, other item.
It was not included then.
Oh, I should really just run it instead of it, I'm sorry.
So that, that, those questions can, or needs to be shared, uh, with the entire board and to give a greater, uh, perspective to what was asked and the response that was, that was given.
I just have a comment. Um, I'm personally in favor of moving forward with this. I think that if we continue pushing and pushing, that we're going to be, our terms are going to be over. That it's our responsibility as a board to make this board better for the next members that serve. And I'm all in favor of moving forward.
All right.
I might just had a question. Has this model been made public yet?
Uh, just one, just one second. Ms. Green has asked, has the floor right now, we'll come back to Ms. Copeland.
I guess my, the, the, as far as, uh.
Speaking of Mike.
As far as services, um, certainly we're at a position where we could use some help ourselves and not, not, um, I'm not that concerned about what may or may not happen with the next board, but I think that there is some, um, there, there, um, there, there is some improvements that this board could certainly make based on the recommendations. I, I, my question relates to the fees because I see no exception. For instance, um, the, 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 the amount of money, the $10,000, but if we don't do everything that we're supposed to do, then it could be up to $70,000. And I don't see anywhere they're indicating any exception. Suppose this was a year that we had COVID and we couldn't continue to do what we needed to do, would we end up having to spend that money? And that's, um, that was, that was one of my concerns and, um, and, and maybe the, the, the more important one to discuss.
Yeah, I, I believe that was definitely a hard stop in the proposal of the $70,000 as a way of, uh, the board holding fast to the commitment, uh, engaging that saying, if you hold fast to the commitment, the $10,000 will, will be your cost. But I definitely see your point and of course, this is definitely a proposal to where it can be modified and sent back to be readjusted. And that's where that $70,000, I believe, came in at. But again, it needs to be clear, uh, to the indication and not, uh, on the assumption of, of what the intention of the, of the $10,000 to the $70,000. But I, uh, definitely see your point there and that was, uh, noted as well when I was actually looking at the proposal. Ms. Copeland?
Um, I was just, uh, I guess comments, curious, um, whether or not this was, uh, made public? Um, or was this just presented to us that, or has this been run by the public yet, number one? Um, number two? Number two, does, how much change in board oversight does this actually bring or will this bring? And I was just curious how this would work getting an outside consultant when we were elected by the community? And is this a first year that this was sought after? Or was this something that you were thinking of previous to new board members coming on board?
So to answer your first question, I believe this was included in the packet when it went out.
I think it was in the public. But I don't think the attachments are in any version of the public agenda.
They're administrative.
So none of the, none of the stuff that we're considering has been put out in the public arena.
So as we're looking at, and you have gotten a proposal, we're discussing those options now as we speak. However, we have engaged with Mr. Cravill before, previously. This was prior to your arrival on the board. However, this development has, has came about or the intent, just based on our last six to eight months working together, moving forward, is one of the reasons why Mr. Cravill was brought in to talk about ways of how we can work together as a governing body, moving forward, making best practices and decision-making. So again, this is a tool that we can build on our own if we so desire to engage based upon the proposal that was given to move forward. Or we can tweak it in any manner that we feel as a board needs to be addressed to help us as we engage further, as we move along. So, so it's not a hard stop of what was actually presented, but it's definitely an opportunity to send back to Mr. Cravill as to what the board collectively would like to see or would like to engage in as we move forward. So definitely this is an opportunity for us as a board, looking at best practices in governance.
Okay, oh, okay. So I guess I'm also really, I feel enthusiastic about this path moving forward. I was at the board workshop, I think there's some really good meeting here. I think we can do some good work. And I, but I do feel like there's been some significant issues raised that, and I just want to understand if we were to approve this proposal tonight, then does that mean we won't get those questions ironed out? Will we be able to have a, maybe change a little bit of the term of the PSA if we need to? One of the responses I got from A.J. was that it said the contract was starting first. So I asked, how does that impact the fact that we had the complimentary workshop? He said that he could change the date of the contract start to today, for instance. So there's just a few things that if we were to vote on it now, I, how will we proceed to make sure that we bring it to the public at, at the right time? And get things moving because there's an awful lot of stuff in here that we want to get done by the end of August.
Could we just make a motion with proposed revisions to the contract?
We could. And, and I think too, I think getting the questions answered, we can definitely.
I think if y'all would just commit to having it on the next agenda, that's all you have to do. Move to go forward and then have the final product on the next agenda.
So those date ranges was instituted by Mr. Cravill himself. Our start date could be one October. And we can modify it to the scope of the work that's being done. It may, it may impact what we're trying to cover again. As we begin to look at the proposal, we can shape it to what it is that we want to cover or what we want to gain from this whole entire package. Now, he outlined it in a scope of a year's worth of work, right? So our start date can be one October if we so desire, just compacting it to a more of a level, degree of achievability of what we're trying to accomplish. So, so there are modifications that we can send back to him as far as proposal is concerned.
I see what you said.
As a board, collectively as a board.
And I guess, will we have to make all those changes now or will we do that?
Before the August.
Before, because I would definitely, to be honest, I wouldn't necessarily want it to go beyond the date for the August power meeting. If we could have a special called meeting to vote on it then, that would be okay with me because I don't, I don't want to stretch this out too long, like Ms. Herter said. I think we want to do as much as we can to get started soon because the term is short. And, and if we want to do things like have the preboarding, that I think one of the questions was, is this preboarding? Or is it for people who are thinking about running? You know, we want to get that going. So we'll be ready.
It sounds like what I'm hearing people say is perhaps we, we don't take action today. We, we get these questions answered, clarify that and put it on the committee of the whole agenda for August and have a special call meeting afterwards so we could vote on it.
Can we actually make a motion to approve with final revisions coming first at a special called meeting?
Well, you know, we're the board, so we can.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the board development proposal from A.J. Cravill with final revisions being presented at a special called meeting, to be determined.
Second. Okay.
And as far as, as far as getting those suggestions and recommendations to make sure they are given to A.J., does that come to you, Reverend Mack, or how do we want to handle that part?
So we can channel those to Julie. To Mr. Cravill. Because I don't want to, I don't want to be inundated with my emails, so. Make sure it gets channeled properly.
Oh, and one thing that.
Okay. Hold on, one at a time. All right, so Julie, do you have the motion? Okay. Ms. Waters. And then, Dr. French, did you have a question, then Ms. Coates?
Yeah, so one of the questions that came up in discussion with another board member was, it's a little unclear what A.J.'s role. Obviously, he's the consultant, he's doing, he would be doing the work with us. However, it's, the PSA is a contract or an agreement with the Council of Great City Schools. And so there's a little confusion about what's A.J.'s role connected to that, is he a separate entity? He doesn't appear to be working for the Great City Schools, but somehow that relationship is important to this agreement. So that's something that we can make sure we clarify.
Okay. All right. So we need Reverend Mack to clarify that. I thought he was working for the Council of Great City Schools.
I can send you an email follow-up.
Okay, so Ms. Coates, did you have a question?
So the one thing that I will say about the contract though is, it's $112,500. I'm only discussing the same dollar amounts that you've allowed them to discuss.
It is.
Yeah. So I mean, the contract is for $112,500 max. And that's because it's the, and there's a max in there. So there's, for $100,000 in eighteen months, there's not a lot of concern that it could go much higher than that. So it's not unreasonable in any stretch of the imagination. And it is built into the contract that it says that. But I think one thing is that the Council of Great City Schools took very, was very specific. And I think you need to get this answer, if the timeline is not honored, the fee jumps. Clearly, they wouldn't charge themselves, they wouldn't charge us more for them not to meet the timeline. And the timeline is part of the package, so we need to know what that means. But as far as products go, I mean, this is a product, just like any other product that is marketed and sold to school districts and for various things, curricula, training, et cetera. And it really does have some, some really good concepts to it. I just, I'm a little concerned that it steers away from operational governance at a time that you're going to have an unprecedented amount of money flowing out of this district to private vendors. And that's at the same time that we're stepping away from the oversight of that. That, that's a concern. And the only other concern that has really held me up is that their mission doesn't serve all the students of Charleston County. So putting them in a position to determine the governance when their mission isn't all the students is a little disconcerting for me.
I mean, we, we will determine what the government is. I mean, I know this is an outline for that, but.
It'll be the SOFG. I mean, yeah, it's, it's the product.
It gets us on a track of being student outcome driven and student focused, in my opinion.
And I also just would say, when it says the fee jumps, we will be charged $10,000 max unless we don't meet the timeline.
And we'll be charged $10,000 plus the other things that are in there. So this is not a $10,000 contract.
No, it is.
Oh, well, it does say plus reimbursement for travel.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Dr. French, like, we need to clarify, we can clarify that in executive session.
It's just that this, it's, it's right here in the public. It says the plan fee is $10,000 plus reimbursement for travel expenses.
Right. And if we need the timeline, that's what it is. Right, good point. All right. Okay, any other questions? So Julie, can you restate the motion for us?
Motion to approve the proposal from A.J. Cravill, the final remains to be determined in the August special call for.
Okay.
And I, I'm not able to open the motions that we have a role.
Yep, yep. Okay, so we'll do a roll call vote. We had a motion in a second, everybody's heard the motion. Ms. Coates?
No.
Ms. Herter? Yes. Ms. Waters?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Ms. Green? Ms. Green is yes. Dr. French is a yes. Ms. Coakley?
No.
Reverend Mack?
Yes.
And I vote yes. At some point, we probably need to discuss, this won't work and it isn't money well spent if we're all, if we don't all participate in it. So I hope we all will participate. Okay, item 6D, constituent board chairs. Reverend Mack, can you attest on that?
Yes, it's just a reminder to the board that the constituent board chairs will be attending our committee of the whole meeting on August the ninth to provide their annual report for the year. Just, just FYI.
And do you know what the format is going to be for that? Like, do they?
So yes, I will have Ms. Champagne to send that format out. Send it to Julie and Julie can send it out to all the board members. What that format.
Basically, y'all are giving them the format and they're supposed to follow it.
Yes. And each, each chair will have ten minutes to make their presentation. But they all have the same format.
Okay. Any questions about that? Okay, the next item is 6E to determine the agenda. Item is moving to potential consent. So item BEDH will go to potential consent, is that correct?
That sounds right to me. This has item 6C on it, but it shouldn't though.
Well, should they just put all of them on there? So can I get a motion to put item 5B, Policy B, BEDH, Public Comments on the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Okay, can I have a second? So we have a motion to put Policy BEDH, Public Comments, on the Consent Agenda for our board meeting following this meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any ayes? All right, motion passes. Your name is, Ms. Coakley, did you want to vote on that?
Aye.
Okay, so that passes unanimously. So item 6C will be not on the Consent Agenda. Closing items for committee of the whole, we have upcoming meetings. August ninth is the committee of the whole meeting. August twenty-third is the board meeting. Any other questions about that? We have a board meeting after this, so don't leave.
I think it's also important to note that, I think in the last motion, we just.
That's what I was gonna say. We, we, I think the motion we just voted on puts us on special call meeting on August ninth.
After the committee of the whole.
Yeah, yeah, special call meeting after the committee of the whole, yes. Okay? I think, yeah, all right. Any other questions? So what time, Reverend Mack, are we coming back? Can we have an afternoon break?
Four twenty?
Okay. All right. And I have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
We will resume at four twenty.
Oh, that's right, I got something in May of 2017. Yep, she's still there. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Wow. Hello?
Every trip, if you could think of your...
Okay, we will... One minute?
So I never get any way for us.
Okay, we can do voice voting, that's not a problem at all. So board members, we will be voting by voice. I will just...
Let's see if she can do it when we did the first motion. That's what she said, she may be able to do it.
Okay, but if we're not able to get the electronic piece, I will be asking for a voice vote. And I will only collect the votes if they say nay. If not, I will say unanimous if I do not hear a nay. All right, entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda and approval of the consent agenda.
Semud.
Move by Ms. Coates, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we will attempt now to vote electronically.
Sorry. It was a short-lived experiment.
Okay, not working, so we'll go voice vote. All in favor by no, by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposes? Ms. Coakley, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes, item 1C.
Semud. Second.
Move by Ms. Coates, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor noted by saying aye?
Aye.
I need everybody to say aye.
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 Any opposes? Hearing none. We're going to adjust one thing on the agenda by just moving up. That's already printed, the recognition of, special recognition that is outlined. Our special guest was already online early, about an hour now. So we want to go ahead and recognize the special individuals at this time. Mr. Andy Peirott will tell them.
Good afternoon, Chairman Reverend Dr. Eric Mack, Vice Chair Courtney Waters, President of Board of Trustees, Superintendent Dr. Green Postlethwaite, everybody else here in attendance. Sacrament, we'd like to take a moment to recognize two of our class of 2020, 21 students for their perfect attendance record during their K through 12 education. It's K through 12. Please be a zoom, Dennis Powell, a 2021 graduate from Wando High School. So congratulations to him for his outstanding attendance record. And in attendance, we also have Deion Davis Jr., a 2021 graduate.
Now curiosity, has anybody on this board gotten the support in their lifetime? Courtney ain't gonna try and just lapse.
So we want to congratulate Deion, we want to congratulate Dennis, both of them. And how about another round of applause for both of our perfect attendance. Both have a great summer and wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. And this concludes this edition of special recognition for this meeting in Sacrament. Thank you.
Thank you. And we say again to both of our recipients on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we congratulate you on a job well done in your attendance for your K through 12 year of schooling. That is very, very impressive. And we say congratulations to you again.
Reverend Mack, I didn't hear which high school Deion attended. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and Wando, I believe, was the other recipient.
Yes.
Yes, okay. At this time now, entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Semud. The move.
The move. We will now go into executive session. How we will do it differently today? We're actually going to go into the conference room. And so you get to stay right here today. All right, yeah. Somebody's already clapping.
I saw that, miss.
I want to resume back into open session. I ask that you please stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. United Republic, course is safe. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, at this time now, we entertain a motion for item 4A.
I move that we approve the request for one year and ask parents to come back next summer for final approval based on completion date of them. Can we just simple that up, say we approved it for one year? I think we need to say we approved it for one year and asked them to come back next year for final approval.
Second.
Okay, move by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Green and Ms. Coats. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please indicate your motion by voice vote. Those in favor and nor by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it. Next item, item unanimously, item 4B.
I move that we deny the request.
Second.
Move by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Coats. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask those in favor and nor by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Ayes have it, it's unanimous. Item 4C.
I move to approve the facility lease agreement with Charleston advancement account.
Second.
Probably move by Ms. Darby, second by Ms. Coats. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that you please indicate, are those in favor, I say aye.
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 I need everybody to respond.
Aye, sir.
Any opposed us?
Yeah, she said aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Item 6A, public comments this morning.
There are no additional public comments.
Okay, no public comments. All right, while there's none, so item 7A, which is the fixed cost of ownership, was included in your packet. Are there any questions?
Question to approve.
Second.
Okay, move by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Coats. Are there any questions? Hearing none, all in favor and nor by saying aye.
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 Are there any opposed us? All right, that items carried unanimously. Item 7B, capital program phase four.
Move to approve the reallocation fund.
Second.
Move by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Darby. Are there any questions? Hearing none, we ask that those in favor indicated by saying aye.
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 Any opposed us? Item carried unanimously. Item 7C, fixed cost of ownership.
Move to approve the reallocation fund from Plexiglas Destruction to the FCO fifty year twenty two culinary arts project for West Ashley. And if funding is sufficient to begin the culinary arts upgrade at Military Bank.
Second.
Move by Ms. Green, second by Ms. Darby and Dr. French. Are there any questions?
I have a question.
Question of Ms. Coats.
So, um, I guess this is you. Yeah, this was originally, and is something that two, two other people in the community have asked, is that it was originally a $1.1 million project. This triples it. We don't typically see your need to triple your budget. We've seen, you know, ten, twenty, eighteen percent add-on, but this now becomes a, a $3.3 million project for one culinary arts center. How did it, how did it blow so, up so much?
Yes, ma'am, good question. Just for background, the project that birthed just a few years ago was three million. So it's not out of line with other culinary renovations that have been done by the district in fact. The other thing to note is that we tried to do the design for both projects, the West Ashley High School and Military Bank, in two years instead of three. In retrospect, would have been easier, more comfortable would be to do the design in one year and then come back the next year, do the programming, and then I wouldn't be asking for this money because we were completing the design just a few months ago. We'd already had to do the program, programming for the project. So, so we had, we, we aimed too low in our program request for a little over a million. And then we found quite a bit of additive things we had to do. We had to redo the grease trap and always set the fire to fire alarms and things that we hadn't anticipated. So with the complete design, we would have had a much better program incentive involved, but it would have taken another year. So trying to get this done in a shorter period of time is what.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Hearing none, we ask those in favor and nor by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed us? Ayes have it unanimously. Item 6D, sale of district asset.
Move to approve the sale of excess IP versus or addresses and identify the funds to be utilized for the renovation of the Garrett campus.
Second.
Move by Ms. Green, second by Dr. French. Are there any questions?
I have one.
Ms. Coats.
Um, so this is renovating it for staff use?
Yes, ma'am, we're looking at using the ARC at Garrett long-term. If you recall, we have, um, we have decided to expand early college high school downtown. And so the Fraser campus is being utilized by Mr. Crops' staff, staff for disposal of district assets. So that would be one action that would go to the ARC. We still have, um, we still have room and much room in Garrett to be used as swing space in the future. So we believe this is the best location.
And it's a long, I think you answered my, my.
It is a long-term use and we're, and we're looking at, at removing temporary space at Bridge Moon so we can get some space off the rolls as well.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Dr. French, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, I applaud Mr. Naraki because he's having some really creative ways to, to bring in a little revenue, these old IP addresses. ways to, to bring in a little revenue, these old IP addresses that we just won't ever need. Um, nice to see that kind of ingenuity.
Okay.
Will this impact Allegro Char School?
No.
No. Allegro's char, Allegro Char School lease ends at Garrett in the summer of 2023.
Okay, not hearing any further questions? All in favor, nor by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Ayes have it. Carried unanimously. Okay, well, included in your packet was the monthly capital project report and the monthly financial report for information. Were there any questions in reference to either one of those items? Okay, hearing none. Consent again to items from the July 19th committee of the whole meeting. Yep, that's already been approved. So, upcoming meeting.
What about, we, are we not having any discussion on AJ's? We're not doing anything on that at the board meeting?
No, that's it.
That's the August committee.
I mean, August committee.
Okay. All right.
All right, upcoming meeting will be the committee of the whole meeting followed by a pressure call meeting to talk about that, the AJ proposal bill thereafter. All right, entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second.
This meeting is now officially adjourned.